Are we good? Are you ready for me, not for us? Yes? Call to order, our Mount Shasta Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, January 21st, 2025. Love the flag.
Monday.
Hi. Tuesday. United States of America and two republics which stand as one nation under a indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Did I say Monday?
No.
Oh, okay. Noted, there's a correction to our agenda. Today's Tuesday. Okay. Item two. Hi Jeff. Are you gonna do roll call?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good, good. Okay, Commissioner Boinger.
Of course, we can't hear you now. Say that again?
Can you hear me?
Uh, sort of. Go ahead.
Commissioner Boinger.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Higera.
Here.
Commissioner Sarian.
Here.
Commissioner McDowell.
Here.
Chair Finley.
Here.
And Commissioner McCarthy called in sick, actually called in babysitting.
Paul's right here. Do you see Paul?
No.
Oh, oh.
Patty McCarthy.
Patty McCarthy, okay. It's a little muddy sounding. It's a little hard to understand. That's possible. All right. Item number three, public comment. This is a moment set aside for folks to address the Planning Commission on some, on an issue that is not on our regular agenda this evening. And if you'd like to, we'll give you three minutes. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to us on something not on the agenda? Come on up, let us know who you are.
Hi, everybody. My name's Evan Drake. I'm a local builder and member of the SISQ Housing Alliance. And I just wanted to simply express my enthusiasm and excitement to work with some of the commissioners on bringing the proposal of tiny house ordinances to City Council for a legal route for permitting tiny houses in our city. Thank you, that's all.
Lovely, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other interest, I'll move on to our consent agenda, unless there are corrections or anybody has comments. We have one item on our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from our October 15th, 2024 regular meeting. And if there's no comments or changes, we can just go ahead and approve it.
I move to approve the minutes of October 15th, 2024.
Okay, we have Belinda moves. Paul second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. The consent agenda item is approved unanimously. Item number five, our staff briefing on the housing element implementation. Jeff, take it away.
Okay, thank you. I changed my speaker settings. Am I being read more loudly and clearly now?
That's better.
Yeah, a little bit better, yeah.
Okay, all right. Let's go with this. In brief, I want to, first of all, welcome back. It's good to see you all, and I'm sorry we haven't, we've had a couple of, shall we say, weather-induced and schedule-induced cancellations, so it's good to be back with you all. I also want to just give you a little, maybe preemptive, words of comfort, that the document before you, all 55 pages of it, is not intended as in any way homework for you, you won't be tested on it, we won't hold you to its verbatim recall by any stretch. But I do rather want you to think about this as a set of working documents that we're going to come back to time and time again. So I'm gonna go straight to Attachment A, and I've organized, based on those three subsections within this Attachment A, that I'm generally calling resource documents. And it's, it is the really operational baseline for implementing the housing element for the next handful of years. Technically, as you all know, the housing element is good for the sixth cycle, it's a fancy way of saying the next eight years. So it's a 23 through 31 document. We've got eight years to execute on these programs and policies and goals. And the first 20 pages of this attachment outline what those goals and policies and programs are. The following eight pages will contain, and I'll go into some detail on this for you over the next 15 or 20 minutes, but the following eight pages contain what's called the Housing Action Plan, and it distills all of those goals, policies, and programs into a succinct framework. It's like a monitoring program that staff of all municipalities throughout California are required to make annual reports about our success in implementing the programs to HCD. So every year, in April, I do an update that is very much based on that Housing Action Plan. And then finally, the last few pages are a bunch of housing sites, really the total amount of housing sites that meet suitability criteria by the state for supporting housing. And they're, it's a baseline that we use at a staff level to say, you know, when we get a project, a housing project on the counter, over the, you know, digital submittal waves about, you know, housing development, whether it's a standalone multifamily project, or a single-family infill project, or a mixed-use project, much like we would expect downtown or in the landing, we compare the quantity of housing proposed with the suitability analysis contained in this data set. And I'll go into a little detail, just so you understand what I mean. It does some projections about holding capacity of housing units per site, and so we compare what we came up with in the analytical baseline, you know, in this document, with what developers propose when the time comes. So with that, I thought what I would do is, rather than go in, you know, let the gravity of detail suck us into each and every page, I want to rather quickly go over a summary of the seven goals in the housing element, and not, again, not get sucked too much into each and every program, because there's 57 of them, but I do want to talk about stuff that is currently underway and give you a sense of what it is you guys will likely be asked to weigh in on and recommend to council in the forthcoming months. And this document already does, or this section actually takes a stab at doing that, in Table 2.2, where it says priority programs. And those, those seven, let's see, six, seven priority programs, HO 1.3 in the left column there, starting, and then subprograms within, the goals, programs within Section 4 are all enumerated there. Those, and I'll touch on those real briefly as I go through this, but suffice it to say that those seven programs are underway presently. Some we've already knocked off and complied with. As you recall, the objective design standards were approved by you and council unanimously. Those are now operational. We have yet to see a proposal come in to apply them to, but they are adopted and they're on the books, and that was one of these programs. There are others that will be following, which relate to changing some definitional standards within the municipal code itself, and that's a very conventional, if you will, housekeeping and maintenance responsibility for the planning department of all cities to update the municipal code every time state law changes. And that happens a lot. Since 2017, we've had annual statutory changes every year, dozens of them. So it's hard to keep up with that level of change, and understandably, our municipal code is lagging a little bit. Not significantly, I wouldn't say, based on my experience, that we're any worse off than the communities I've worked in, but it's not uncommon. So don't think that we have too much deferred maintenance in our, in the upkeep of our code. So unless anybody has any questions about what I just said, sort of the approach to this delivery, I'm willing to just kind of march through here, goal by goal, so there's seven of them. I'm gonna read the goal, and I'm gonna touch briefly on, you know, I'm gonna skip through the policy statements and kind of go to each action item that's gonna give us staff and you, Planning Commission, our marching orders. So any questions for me before I continue to blather on here?
Commissioners? I was wondering if you wanted what we're looking at at the screen to match what you're talking about, because right now, we just have the first page of the Parklet ordinance showing up, as opposed to the housing.
Oh, interesting. Because the screen I'm sharing shows the housing element.
Let's give them a moment. Do you know?
Let's see what's going on.
So they think it's you that has the...
Let me stop, I'll stop sharing and I'll re, I'll reshare.
I know. Now I get a nice big view of you.
Hi.
Just share the screen and pick the file.
How about that?
Yep, that's better. Good job.
He goals, policies, implementing, yay.
Yep, that's what we wanted. Thank you.
Okay, so I was blathering on about Table 2.2, and there it is. So you see those seven programs are called out by the HCD reviewer, saying, you guys better get going on this, otherwise you're in trouble. We've begun this. So all seven of those programs are either complete or well underway to being complete. So without further ado, I'm gonna move on to Goal One. So HO stands for Housing Element, or Housing, why is it saying, just Housing? So it's Goal One, provide adequate sites. So all these goals make sure, or all these programs and policy statements within this goal, ensure that we have adequate sites to accommodate not only our regional housing needs supply, which is that Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, that I'm sure you remember fondly, that is the legal baseline, the bare minimum we've got to do. We are in really, really good shape with the RENA. We have 44 housing units in the previous eight years. We met and exceeded that, and as a consequence of that, believe it or not, in the next eight years, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment number is two.
And that's from the, and we achieved that by what's going on over at the corner of Chestnut and Ivy?
Correct, yeah. So we will, we entitled that with a planning or land use entitlement, not a building entitlement. So we call those pipeline projects. They're in the pipeline because they received a planning green light, but they didn't receive a building green light. We just got word that they have started that work, so they have all of their consultants on board, their engineers are calling us, asking for base data. So we would expect dirt moved on that site this spring, maybe late spring is what we're expecting. Those units are going to go a long way toward, obviously, exceeding our 2331 regional housing needs numbers, and then give us some in the pipeline as well. So, but I want to make clear that even though we're meeting those baseline needs, the state law has blossomed to include mandates for local municipalities to go above and beyond those regional housing needs, and to make housing generally, particularly affordable housing and multifamily housing, which is affordable by its very design, more available at a local level through, by right, land use entitlements. So no discretionary review for housing. And we've already done that as a part of, as a part of our, as a concurrent legislative act with the objective design standards. We allowed multifamily housing in R1, 2, and 3, and C1, 2, excuse me, R2, 3, and C1, C2. Lots of good data as we go through here. You know, they actually break it down into, that is, HCD breaks down our demand into new construction, rehab, preservation. So we understand what our housing stock looks like, what our housing stock looks like and where the opportunities are to preserve that which exists, because, you know, the adage is true that the most affordable housing is existing housing. So to the degree that we can maintain and upgrade and preserve existing housing, we'll go a long way, particularly in a community with the context of Mount Shasta, where we have a fair amount of older housing that is ready to be rehabbed. We don't want to lose it. So that's part and parcel with a lot of the policy statements and the goal of this particular So the first program that mandates we do something is 1.3.1, which is provide adequate sites with no net loss. The little symbol, as you may recall, with the state symbol there, that means it's being done to comply with a state law. And wherever possible, we indicate what that state law is. So with that one, it's obvious that we are going to maintain the existing provisions within our municipal code and the general plan to allow housing where it is presently allowed, and that we're not going to downzone or reduce the density on any of those housing units. And that when someone comes in to the counter and gives us a development proposal, we're gonna make sure it meets the bare minimum of those minimum density standards that appear in the very last section of this document by parcel. This one really talks a lot about the monitoring of sites that identified in Table 8.6, and that's the one, the last section of this document as well. So that's, as I touched on in the intro, we have that as a baseline. We're always monitoring for compliance with development proposals. Water and sewer, pretty straightforward. As we move forward with water sewer connections, we prioritize housing areas. So we induce, the idea is that we induce housing development or private investment in housing through public investment in water and sewer connections. We, of course, can make sure that developers pay their fair share proportionally for those connections, but that's the essential nexus between water sewer and the cost and availability of housing that we have to maintain with this particular program. Again, public infrastructure outside our service areas, we do fund, provide services to properties outside the city limits. It's not unusual for smaller jurisdictions and rural communities to provide public infrastructure and support to abutting properties. So public water and sewer, that's essentially monitoring availability of that for outside Goal Two is to ensure that we're providing a variety of housing types. As you know, from our objective design standards discussion, we talked a great deal about what that means at a city of Mount Shasta scale and context. So we're not talking about three and five-story buildings in our city, we're talking more about cottage-scale industry, individual, smaller units, efficiency units that are on larger, some of our larger, deeper sites that are well-connected to local services. So we did a great deal of analysis about that from a consistency standpoint to preserve our local character and architectural kind of vibe in the city, and that's essentially what this goal is all about. And I think we succeeded, you all, I mean, you should really pat yourselves on the back for this, because this is a very heavy lift to make sure that we did have a lot of housing context discussion in our objective design standards moving forward, we could rely on it as reinforcing that character pretty effectively, I think. We need to promote the housing programs to our residents, and again, this is just a kind of virtual statement to make sure that we have the availability of these programs are conveyed to the public via our website and outreach events, and those include workshops or other public events. So you'll be seeing me coming forward with these kinds of workshops that essentially advertise what we're doing to support housing to the broader community. As you remember, SB 35 was the bill that got it all going back in 2017, and it's driving a lot of our compliance process for streamlined permitting and ministerial review. So we use that as the overarching reason for being at our planning level, and when I do my updates annually, as I said, it's because we're complying with SB 35 to do so. Local density bonus procedures, again, the density bonus law has been in effect quite some time, you guys are well-versed in it, and this is just simply saying, keep it up, and where possible, make sure that your municipal code is keeping abreast of new state laws that are, that make clear the amount of bonus for increased density that is due a project based on its level of affordability. So that's the subtle twist in that statement. We are monitoring our fees and under a cost recovery model that the city of Mount Shasta's been in under for a while, certainly prior to my arrival here. We need to make sure that as we recover those fees, for example, the cost of staff's time, the cost of administrative time, the cost of Planning Commission time, is all a recoverable fee that we charge back to developers, but this statement makes it very clear that that needs to be monitored to ensure that we are equitably providing for incentives within that structure to facilitate or make affordable housing more attractive from a fee standpoint. So as we update our fees, we would, in this case, give some discounts for affordable, or some degree of affordability within a housing development proposal based on its level of affordability. Zoning updates for multifamily development, we've done that, congratulations, that was a big lift. We're probably, at least by state law, compliant within Title 18. We might be doing a little more sharpening of the statements around, or the provisions within the code around... within the code around that first sentence, that is, what is owner-occupied rental mixed tenure multifamily by right without a conditional use permit? Right now, we just say all multifamily housing. It's possible that in the next eight years, we might make some updates to this to more incentivize ownership housing, for example. And it would all depend on what type of market presents itself. We're already seeing some apartments in town that are asking for condo conversions. We've done a couple of those, and there's a state law that makes that approvable at a staff level. SB 9 and 10 allow us to convert ownership and split lots ministerially for two lots or less. JADU and ADU zoning changes. We have a code, we have our ADU code, which will likely be updated annually now as we move forward into, I think, anticipated changes. As you know, we're looking forward to more liberal definition of ADUs to include tiny homes on wheels. That is very much in line with the intent of this legislation and design standards that go along with that. And the question is whether we go above and beyond and allow tiny home villages in certain parts of town under certain design restrictions. So very much in line with the intent of this particular program. Manufactured homes, we're already pretty well in compliant with manufactured homes. We look at those in our municipal code presently as synonymous with single-family dwellings. So we do allow those in R1 districts, anywhere a single-family home is allowed, and we allow multifamily home, manufactured unit as well. We, again, this program 2.3.7 establishes our local objective design standards. We knocked that one out of the park a little while ago. This one, you are well aware of with your discussion about the nest and making sure that off-street parking demands do not unduly increase the cost of providing housing, particularly if the units themselves don't demand that much housing. So we have a little bit of work to do in our municipal code to make sure that the parking generation rates are in line with the demand for parking based on the type of unit that is a small-bedroom unit. Small, you know, studios demand less parking than would a three-bedroom house, for example. So aligning those parking supply numbers with the number of bedrooms is a better way of making sure that we have enough parking, off-street parking spaces to park the cars that will likely be induced by the development. Streamlining for housing that is affordable and/or target special needs populations. This one is, zeroes in on the examples and parentheses there. So making sure the municipal code provides for options or there's other programmatic incentives for seniors, homeless, farmworkers, disabilities, single-parent households and large families. We haven't really cracked this open yet. There isn't a driving statutory mandate for it. A lot of it has to do with the definitional standards for what a family is and what a housing, some of the housing occupancy provisions. So we can talk about that in detail when the time comes. So this one goes part and parcel with our provision to allow multifamily housing by right in the previous, in the zoning districts that previously permitted them with a conditional use permit. They're calling it, the state likes to call it site plan review. We just simply called it objective design review and subjected everybody to it. So we do have that site analysis or site planning section, as you recall, in our objective design standards, and that was in compliance with this particular program. So goal number three is about existing housing stock. So we conserve it, we rehabilitate it, and we try to enhance the condition of existing neighborhoods. There are a handful of policies and programs. It really has a lot to do here with, the operative word here is promotion. Obviously, the city can't do a lot to, in other words, well, we don't build housing, we don't rehab housing, we're not in that business. The city is here to promote it and to encourage it and throughout the entitlement process and transparency of process. So this is where the promotional tools come into play, that when you go to our website, is it clear that there are programs available for folks to upgrade their housing? Well, the website, we just overhauled the website. I have some administrative credentials inside the back office of that housing or that website, and I've actually figured out how to do it successfully. Two different things. So I'm, I, you will be seeing me as I move forward with some of these programs, as I implement, you know, check our website from time to time. I think you'll see, you know, for example, a housing landing page that has, does a lot of promotional attempts at making sure that the programs that exist at a state and federal level are well-exposed to the local community and the development community that's speculating on development in town. And right now, we have a little bit of work to do on that front. We do not have a housing replacement policy on the books right now that is in compliant with state law. So this one is something that'll be a new program coming up here within the next 12 months, I think, maybe, maybe even less. This, this one, this gets into, if someone comes in and develops housing on a site that does not meet, that does not include housing development to the density and intensity standards that we've assumed in our base analysis, and that's the last section of this, of this, of your resource documents here, is lower than our projected holding capacity. There is something called a replacement policy that provides for the provision of housing elsewhere in the city, or they have to build to a baseline minimum on that site. So it's a, it's a bit of a standard requirement that says, if you've got a mixed-use project that's come to town on a particular site and allows 20 units an acre, you need to provide some housing in your mixed-use housing development. So at-risk affordable housing, this is, again, monitoring and reporting. It's what I do annually. So we have an understanding of what the housing stock looks like in terms of its risk for decay and conversion and either adaptive reuse or the loss of housing units that are already affordable. And we have to make sure that we're preserving that capacity. So the worst-case scenario is we have an affordable housing project that deeds out. It's been there for 50 years, let's say. What happens when the time comes where that deed restriction sunsets? We need a policy, certainly a program, that monitors that loss and goes a step further to attempt to replace it elsewhere in town or on-site. Another promotional exercise to make sure that the qualified housing entities that do work locally, are part of the federal and state noticing protocol to make sure that we're connecting resources at a state and regional level with developers that are doing work locally in the affordable housing market. Again, monitoring of at-risk housing, very similar to previous two programs. This one drills into CDBG analysis so that we're incumbent upon the available, availability of financing funds at a state level directly linked to our ability to demonstrate that we're preserving, we're monitoring and preserving affordable housing. This doesn't really apply to us, but local mobile home park conversion ordinance. This is more targeted to cities that have many more of them. I think you'll probably see something like this come your way for discussion, particularly in light of the tiny homes on wheels initiative afoot, because these are very much linked. And it'll, it'll be a very interesting conversation to have, is making sure that we are understanding the distinctions to be made between a true mobile home park and a tiny home village. So I think that legislation is in compliant with the intent of this particular program. Condo conversion. Right now, we don't have a very clear and explicit set of mandates or provisions within our code that make this clear, and we will. We should be, the market is already here, as I mentioned. So goal four is facilitating the provision of housing for special needs, and we have a number of programs that are, again, complying with state law and ensuring that the promotional and exposure side of what is available at a regional level is locally available through promotional efforts on our website. So we'll probably be seeing more of this come our way. But again, all driving, all being driven by the low-barrier navigation centers and transitional and supportive housing at a state level. And we've already done some of this, so this may sound familiar already. Emergency shelters, same thing, making sure that we're keeping up to par with state mandates for provision of shelters as well. The definition of family is, in our municipal code, is, I say a little above and beyond. It references people who identify as a family rather than the state mandate, which is by birth, adoption, or extended family. And the reason that HCD is concerned about this definition of family is because that family income is used as the baseline for eligibility for funding and density bonuses. So what is, what constitutes a family needs to be legally consistent in order for that whole program and protocol to work. So we have some tweaks to do just to stay consistent with state definitions. Group homes, similar, there's thresholds for different group homes, different sizes. There's six or more, six and less, some are state-licensed, some are not. We've already done a great deal of work within previous administrations to update this. The previous fifth-cycle housing element had municipal code updates that were consistent with this. So this is more in, more along the same lines as making sure that we're updating that code with, to be consistent with state law. Reasonable accommodation policy. Mostly, you'll see there, the items one and two drill into what we need to do for Mount Shasta. So off-street parking in 1544 needs to be overhauled, and we need to make more explicit provisions in there about housing for folks with disabilities and the provision of housing to suit those needs. It's odd, in my experience, that we would have a parking section or chapter that is within our building codes title. We would probably, as we revise this, pull this out of Chapter 15 or Title 15 and move it into Title 18, which is zoning, because that's a better derivative for parking demand than would be the building code. Inter-jurisdictional coordination. So we're needing to do a little better job of sharpening our promotional messaging around what's happening at the county level and at the state level even to address homelessness. We don't have as big a problem as other jurisdictions in our community, but as it's been well-tested and supported throughout the California, the solution does tend to be a regional one, particularly in small rural communities where services are limited. And by that, they're pretty, those homeless challenges tend to be localized to where those services are. So making sure that, for example, a shelter in Waikiki has the capacity as our homeless population increases and possibly contributing through inter-jurisdictional coordination. Goal five zeroes in on affordable housing particularly, and it's essentially the notion that we need to focus on that low end of the scale. I will put the caveat out there that this particular goal is common. As I've mentioned, we have a RENA standard right now that is low. We will, obviously, will have met it very shortly in the near future, within the next year, 16 months, as we permit the Mount New Townhomes. And the challenge for us is going to be continuing with the initiatives associated with where other housing in the affordable categories of low and extremely low income will go in the city, particularly under the SB 35 intents, that that income, low-income housing be, not be isolated, but it be broadly supported throughout the community. So disparity with, you know, income disparity in the provision and location of low-income housing is what the state's particularly focused on here. And the role the planning staff, the role the planning commissioners play, particularly with respect to engaging with developers early in their pro forma analysis to leverage partnerships for joint ventures for both affordable and market-rate housing in the same project, is what this is intended to achieve. Childcare and workforce development as a programmatic component to two projects is also called for in the realm of encouragement as we engage with developers early on. And I think this is more of the same, but focusing on leveraging funding options for locally. So a good example would be a, an Anlou housing fund that is established for a market-rate project that comes in and proposes no affordable housing, but will pay for that right. And that funding goes into a fund to support affordable housing and is leveraged locally and controlled locally and is a better incentive. and controlled locally and is a better incentive to make sure that housing, affordable housing is included throughout the city and not isolated in singular locations where affordable housing or where the project site and its context are more affordable to develop. So we can offset some of those programmatic challenges at a pro forma level with a little bit of funding contribution.
Jeff?
Yeah?
So that, it sounds like, so if somebody wants to do it, I'm trying to get the clarity on this one.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to do some kind of a project, but they don't, it's not an affordable housing, they can get, pay extra to help with another affordable project? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we lack, our city generally lacks that opportunity. We don't have.
So my concern is the consistent cost of building goes up and up and up, and so what they put in in 2019, 2026, if it doesn't happen till 2030, it's not going to do as much good. Let's put it that way.
Right.
And so I don't know how that gets mitigated, but that I just.
Yeah, that's a good point, and most of these types of funds need to be updated annually or they're, you're right, some people, it's called.
And do these, do these funds get put into some kind of an investment account so that they accrue interest or whatever?
Yes, so in my previous city, this was a combination of funding sources. There was 1%, I think, of the TOT annually that was contributed to the In-Lu Housing, Affordable Housing Fund. And then every project, every commercial project that came to town that did not deliver housing, but in a way contributed to the demand for housing because they built commercial floor space and created a job, so there was what's called a linkage fee. And then the housing feeing out or opting out fund was the third source. So if a developer comes to town and says, yeah, I have a mixed-use project, but I only want to put a fraction of the development or housing units on it, and I don't want to give you or build any affordable, so we, the city then charges them, you know, X amount for that right, so X amount per unit. Now, in some communities, those numbers go up to, you know, the derivative, the amount is the difference between building an affordable unit and building a market rate unit. And in some markets, those numbers go up to the hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit. We probably won't get that high, but it's not uncommon for an affordable housing linkage fee to be 10, 15, 20, or even two or three times that, thousands of dollars per employee, and up to $100, $150,000 per unit that someone proposes not to build. So they're also required to have nexus, reasonable nexus analysis, so that means it's a study that makes sure that the cost to build that housing in a given year matches the fee itself. So we would update, and these ordinances typically have an escalator clause that allows staff to escalate those fees annually to suit a certain indices, for example, you know, CPI or, you know, other measures.
Okay.
To your point, you know, it's not a static number. It can't be, so you're right.
Is it more an effective tax is what it sounds like though, isn't it?
Yeah, it could be called a housing tax, and, you know, you've got to be careful because there's a consequence to some of these types of initiatives because what you don't want to do is over legislate to the degree that you throttle the housing market down for the delivery of all housing at the expense of, you know, you're trying to build affordable housing, and if you don't do it, you have to pay for it, well, they're going to go somewhere else and build their market rate housing. So it's got to be very strategic, and it's got to be aligned to suit both the market, the delivery of those units by product type, and the median income of the community that we're building in. So yeah, it's a very sensitive and very rich analysis behind making sure that we're providing that local funding, for sure.
Thank you.
Again, promoting for affordable housing developers, we're doing that. You know, your city manager and I are talking to affordable housing developers down valley and, well, in Shasta County, who are doing quite a bit of work down there and trying to, you know, entice them to pursue work up here. Same as people kind of skip over Mount Shasta and build in Waikiki, we're trying to entice them to have conversations here locally. But we need to do a better job, get some of those programs up on our website and do workshops in coordination with the county as well. And we've been talking to county staff and city staff about doing that. This is a really good opportunity to talk more about, I think, the tiny home on wheel stuff. And, you know, a homeownership model includes mobile home ownership as well. Can a home on wheels owned by someone come to and be supported locally that fits into the design context in a manner that reinforces and not compete with local context? So that'll be an interesting design challenge for us to have with, we're fortunate to have local interest groups that know the issue from the inside out, literally. So that's very squarely behind the intent of this particular program. And sustainable housing and energy efficiency and conservation, there's the standard, you know, keep deferred maintenance, you know, out of kind of the habitual state of ownership, provide opportunities for locals to understand more about grant funding that's available to keep houses both energy efficient and upgraded with respect to building materials. This has a lot also to do with fire hardening, so there's a lot in these programs that kind of overlap with the fire code, and there's a lot of conversation around how to create housing that could be more affordable by design and safer by design and more energy efficient by design, et cetera. So these overlapping objectives tend to fall into the kind of group intent behind these handful of programs. The goal seven, promoting equal and fair housing opportunity for all folks. This really is the heart and soul of the fair housing initiatives that started way back in the 60s and 70s with discrimination and then expanded in the 2000s to expand beyond race, color, religion, to include income disparity, et cetera. So it's very evolutionary, and this is probably one of the ones that gives you all the most opportunity, I think, to make sure that as we move forward, we are facing some of the most significant localized challenges above and beyond the bare minimum. And by that, I mean, you know, just because we have a low RENA number, we build our two affordable housing units next year, well, the state says your work's not finished. You know, we all know, and it can be very anecdotal for those of us who have tried to find housing and can't, even though that individual may not be income challenged, they still did not have their housing needs met locally. And I think that's part and parcel with this disseminating fair housing information throughout the city. You know, second homeownership is creeping up into the double digits in Mount Shasta. By the analysis in the housing element, we are upwards of 18 to 20% of our housing stock is second and third homeownership, and we know that, the data sources are good and reliable. And unfortunately, that seems to align with a lot of the housing demand for, you know, the types of houses that workforce want to live in that aren't at the affordable level, but they're at that mid-price point and above. So you might call it staff-level or executive-level housing, but it's also part of the conversation to have when we address housing needs, for sure. The AFFH Housing Action or the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Action Plan, that is an entire appendix of the document, which I have excerpted in the following chapter or the following section here for your resource documents, but that is the nuts and bolts. It's kind of the matrix that I'm going to be using to go back to time and time again to make sure that we're meeting the statistical baseline that we said we would and that our housing goals are aligned with those local housing needs, and we demonstrate that to the state. So this is, and I think I'll pause there because that was a lot, I felt like I was blathering out a lot, but before I transition to the next eight pages here, I want to make sure that you all understand that all of those programs that I just highlighted will staff their marching orders over the next handful of years and probably front-loaded into 12 to 16 months. And what we need to do is make sure that those actions are guided by what you're looking at now. So this is our housing action plan that has those programs in the left column that I talked about that are particular to the fair housing component. Not all the programs are here, but just the key fair housing action ones are. It describes what that specific action is, and it describes the timeline for that actionable item and then our items. And then there's a targeting component which focuses on the part of the city that they're intended to address, and I think they're mostly citywide, I can't remember exactly. And then the measurable outcomes. So within eight years, and again, annually, I need to come back to this far-right column to make sure I, you know, I do what I said we'd do so that HCD could give us a certified housing element and thereby rendering us eligible for all sorts of grant funding and just being on their good guy list and not on a naughty list, which doesn't get you anywhere. So I don't want to give you, I'm not going to go through this row by row because in the interest of time and patience, I just want to let you know that this is kind of the baseline that I go back to to make sure that we're calibrating this. If I were to assign any kind of, you know, homework to you guys, just become familiar with this, just spend a little time on it. I, you know, it's just me and the department, so if there's something that piques your interest in this, feel free to come to me. A lot of cities with greater resource will have housing ad hoc committees or housing subcommittees or housing advisory committees that are Brown Act mandated that meet and zero in on housing, particularly these actionable items here. My previous city had a housing advisory committee that I was staffed for, and their job was to dig into the details here, come back to planning commission, make advisory recommendations for you all to consider, and then move, and if you so chose to, you could advise that body or direct that body to advise council accordingly. And it just kind of doubles up the human resource on key topics. So this would be a really good program to march through for such a committee. But you can see lots of dates, they're all 2026, 2024, 26, some of them are stretched out, two years of adoption, so, you know, we've got a fair amount of work to do within two years of adoption. 18 months of adoption, this is, in this particular one, is Program D that improve information and visibility of infill housing opportunities or housing types and typologies. A lot of this is consistent with some of what we've already done for the objective design standards, so it feels to me like it could be a continuation of a lot of the, what I find the most enjoyable part and the most challenging part of the objective design standards conversation, which is really what is context and what is the more suitable type of housing development to make sure that we're preserving what we find valuable in architectural character and development conditions in different parts of the city, and then drilling into a site to see what it gives you to align with that context. You know, some of these stretch out to three years with end housing element adoption, but you can see there's a great deal of information here, and it will all sound familiar, the programs in the far-left column are the same programs that I highlighted, a subset of them focus on the real nuts and bolts of furthering our fair housing initiatives locally. And then finally, this final set of data is what we come back to on a site-by-site basis. So you can see the APN in the left column, the land use designation in the general plan, our zoning designation, the units per acre. There's a realistic density unit calculation, which is pretty consistent throughout, you know, it tends to isolate right around 75 to 80% of the big number, but it also, it takes into account, you know, slopes, wetlands, and other site-specific context. But please keep in mind that these are very generalized numbers. That is the number that we would come back to and test. So if, for example, on that very first APN, someone were to come in and say, I want to build three housing units instead of, you know, the 4.5, well, we would say, well, why? You know, is it, sorry, factor and calculate, realistic number of views is three. So if they want to build two, then we're going to ask them why to demonstrate, is there a wetland? Well, yes, there's a wetland, and it was bigger than we thought it was, and so the onus would be on that developer or that homeowner as they're redeveloping their site potentially to prove what we think we already know, to verify that wetlands are indeed where we think they are, and that's a question, because a lot of the citywide data for wetlands is not site-specific data for wetlands because the city hasn't undergone a comprehensive wetlands analysis. We have from time to time for large-scale projects, we have an inventory that FEMA provides us, and that's for insurance purposes, and those FEMA maps were recently updated, and that does affect the analytics. But again, the onus is on staff to make sure that we understand what those analytics tell us and that our public works department and our planning department have the expertise to understand what it means. And historically, we haven't, and we don't. So that's why we drill into this level of detail to cross-check what we think we know at the community scale with what we need to know at a site scale. So this is very high fire hazard severity zone. And you see, no, 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 yes, 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 so that also affects that ultimate number. I've already used this a couple of times as we've gotten projects that come in, just to double-check the. just to double-check the analysis. So it's kind of comforting that it's here citywide and it gives us, you know, a total number of housing units there, one hundred and seventy-seven point four total holding capacity within R1, subtotal for R2, and so on. R3 and subtotal for C1 and C2. So this is holding capacity that includes every housing, site that's identified as a housing suitable site by zoning and land use designation. Source material there, source documents there for wetlands and fire hazard severity zones, which are also updated. So I'm going to take a deep breath and let you guys wake up because I can't see who's nodding off from my, you're very small people on my screen. I apologize for all the blathering, but I felt like it was necessary just to give you, in a nutshell, what I'm going to be up to, what's occupying a lot of my time over the next twelve to sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-six months and what will be trickling your way on a pretty consistent basis. So there you have it. Happy to pause for questions before our next thing.
Commissioners, questions, comments for Jeff? Doesn't look like it. We didn't schedule a public hearing for this, so I wasn't planning to open it up to the public. This is just giving everybody a chance to hear what's up. So.
That's it. It's a one-up presentation.
So I guess the only question I have, Jeff, is this will kind of dictate what comes back to us as far as what ordinances we might have to put forth in the coming months and years. I saw some of that in the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, you know, this will be the priority initiative at a staff level. These will be the priority initiatives in order for us to comply with state law. And a lot of them will require our municipal code amendments. And so we'll be doing a lot of municipal code amending and a lot of program and policy-level stuff that will, a lot of this I don't need to bother you with. I would say maybe a third of it or a half of it I could do by myself by just updating our website or going to a meeting in White Rica on fair housing initiatives. But I think what I'd rather do is keep it local as much as is possible and we can afford the time to make sure that, you know, our quote-unquote "community engagement" is as local and as robust as possible. So that's where you all come in. And I think what makes most sense, because we're all busy folks, is to co-locate or have a concurrent, you know, Planning Commission meeting that is, call it a workshop, on some housing initiative or another. We've done that before and it seems to work well here. Maybe we start earlier. Maybe we even do it on a weekend when there's no new snow and we all can tear ourselves away from the slopes and come down and talk about housing or something. I don't know. So you'll see a lot of it come your way in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, thank you.
How, since we don't have a newspaper, how, you know, it's interesting how to approach getting this information out to the public.
Yeah, I think we're, we talked about that a little bit. You know, I think the Nextdoor, the Facebook, the, you know, people are navigating their personal lives with their thumbs. You know, why not their city engagement lives as well? So, you know, I think a more robust social media campaign is a good starting point. But good old bricks and mortar flyers or notices that are posted tend to work. Message boards, both digital and physical, you know, that kind of stuff. I think I tested that in my previous community and it worked really well. I'd rather engage folks who, I think there's a whole subset of folks out there who don't normally get engaged and are choosing priorities because they're faced with, you know, choices that they're faced with. And I'd like to be in their face a little more about, you know, if housing's important, you come down and let's talk about it. And we have a new staff member in City Hall who's struggling to find housing and I empathize with her and we're, I think we start with the big employers and say, you know, here's an opportunity to share your future vision and dreams about how the city of Mount Shasta accommodates housing demand. You know, I think that's a very interesting question to put to people. See what you get.
You know, the piece about contacting employers, like Berryvale, for instance, has a lot of employees that are struggling to find housing. And it would be good to get, and I know that they would be open to communicating things to their employees about that kind of stuff. But it's when and what, you know? That's the, it can't just be a general, you should pay attention. It's more like, hey, on Wednesday, there's going to be. Or have you, do you know that there is this affordable housing opening up? You can put an application in, that kind of thing, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The housing resource page is a good one. It's, you could make it just four choices, you know? You're an employer in town, you want to connect your employees to housing. You're an employee, you need housing, funding sources, you know, to maintenance and upgrades to materials for energy efficiency and fire hardening. You know, if we just did one landing page on the city website and then steered everyone to it via these meetings and via, you know, outreach campaigns digitally, you know, I think that would be a very effective tool here locally. It just feels to me like more people are, you know, obviously integrated digitally than ever have been, so why not go there? But then the usual, you know, obviously the paper to that, the extent to which it exists and our postings and noticings around town. And then I also think a standing opportunity, these hit-or-miss things are risky. You know, an event comes and goes and you're like, darn, you know, had I known? Well, guess what? There's another one. So recurring events, standing meetings, well-notified, well displayed and noticed digitally, I think is a good starting point.
Great. Anything, commissioners, anything else? Okay, I think we're good. Are we ready?
Okay.
For item four. Item number six, our parklet ordinance.
So this is a discussion item. It's not a public hearing. There's no action requested at all from you guys. But I wanted to engage you. And I think the way to procedurally deal with this would be for me to give you just a quick update of context so you understand why we're here, what challenges locally with our parklets led to this being an issue or an item before you and what your choices moving forward are. I really want to try to focus your analysis on or your discussion on some key components here. And I'll touch on those in a minute. But briefly, we, you know, some of you may recall, this happened before my time, but we did add to the municipal code of chapter nineteen oh-three called Parklet or chapter nineteen regarding the parklet dining. And they initially were defined as temporary, non-permanent facilities. Most communities who did this did so for COVID purposes to give people dining opportunities with less COVID risk. And this always happens, that temporary and non-permanent translated to wood structures that required more maintenance than they were actually in receipt of over time. And so through deferred maintenance, these temporary, non-permanent facilities became painfully obvious as temporary and non-permanent due to decay, damage, collision, et cetera. I think by comparison, the two parklets that we do have in town have held up pretty well. Coincidentally, the Sparkies Parklet has been sold or the Sparkies has been sold and we will be getting a new applicant because parklet permits are not transferable. We're going to get a new applicant for the Sparkies Parklet. And what staff has the opportunity to do during that reissuance is to provide conditions of approval to ensure that whatever deferred maintenance may exist is caught up with. And so if you can imagine, the Sparkies Parklet has some vertical lighting stanchions that are crooked. They were hit, one was hit. It's kind of dangling, it feels to me like with a good set of tools, you could get out there and fix it. But I just think there's been a little bit of maintenance deferred. By comparison, right next door is the Pipeline Parklet, which looks virtually habitable by virtue of its design integrity and structural integrity. So, you know, by putting those things side by side as comparisons, you can, you know, by my design eye, from a staff's perspective, kind of see that the pipeline sets a standard from a construction and design standpoint that if we were to permit any more of these, we would want to look to successes in our environment right now. I would submit that the Pipeline Parklet is more, is a better and more successful from its design and structural integrity as an example than Sparkies is. So we'll try to rectify some of the deferred maintenance. There's some other structural stuff and rodent-related problems typically with parklets that we have to evaluate. Rodents tend to like to habitate under parklets because there's a food source and they're sheltered, so they become attractive nuisances. So we have to, we have to inspect for those purposes. So that's why we're here. City Council suggested that staff run this up by Planning Commission so that you guys could give staff some direction and some recommendations on amendments to the parklet ordinance. And what I've tried to do for you is narrow down your analytical energy to these three subsections. So Design and Operational Requirements, which is section oh-six-oh, Design Evaluation, oh-seven-oh, and Design Standards for Parklets, oh-eight-oh. And I think what I'd like to do is give you guys, you know, a month to dig into this. You know, be prepared if you will. If you want to troubleshoot your ideas with me, I'm happy to collaborate between now and our next standing regular meeting. And we would be at a point where you could formulate some recommendations and we could discuss it. I think it's important enough that we take that approach rather than me setting a deadline halfway between now and then and coming back to you with a recommendation. It feels to me like we might need an opportunity for you all to get your heads into this and then really formulate some tangible recommendations. There's some wonderful examples online about cities who have undergone this conversion from temporary to permanent parklets. And for communities that don't dedicate to that conversion, I can tell you that everyone that I'm familiar with has dismantled their parklets and they're back to curb-to-curb right-of-way because they become liability problems. We're fortunate that we have at least one design or one maintenance continuity between the two parklets we have in town. I'm hopeful that the new owner of Sparkies will commit to a maintenance program. Otherwise, we would pull the permit. They wouldn't be permitted to operate and they would be required to, you know, to demo the parklet. So these are big issues to resolve. There are design challenges associated with what that aesthetically, what they look like. Should they look all the same? Should there be more design continuity between each of these parklets? Or is it okay for them to be slightly different? As the attachment, I've highlighted the sections that I'd like you to look at. And again, zeroing in on the definition that means they're temporary and non-permanent. Do we keep this as a temporary condition or a non-permanent condition? Or do we strike that and make them permanent platforms? That's part of what I'd like to get your heads around and maybe we can deliberate what that means next time. And I can be prepared certainly to give you examples illustratively about communities that have transitioned from temporary to permanent.
Can you email, would you email those to us?
I sure will. That's a good idea, yeah. I'll give you some examples of my previous community. We underwent a very deep analysis and they ultimately decided, council decided to get rid of the parklets because they were too expensive to maintain and they could not rely on the merchants abutting those parklets to contribute the amount of revenue necessary to successfully and completely maintain them.
Well, who would, who would maintain them besides the business owner?
Well, for example, our permitting procedure was set up to connect the approval with agreements to maintain. So we're in very good stead there. Other communities have called them public parklets and allowed, for example, if I get a burrito from a cart and want to sit out at the public parklet, I can pull up a table and, you know, or pull up a chair to a public parklet table and have every right to be there along with the restaurants that have bought those parklets. So we're fortunate that whoever generated, created this code did so with very direct operational standards that were incumbent upon those abutting operators to be responsible for. But again, we come back to that question of regardless who's paying for it, are they doing a good job? Are they maintaining them? Are they attractive or are they attractive nuisances? Are we at risk of any kind of liability by virtue of their decay over time because they were designed as temporary? If we want to transition to something permanent, what does that really look and feel like? And who's going to bear the burden of that cost or that conversion to whatever state of permanence is?
So Jeff, it'd be good to, I mean, I looked at some parklets in the Bay Area, but like Palo Alto, but that's not the same weather conditions or road conditions that we have, which is, you know, this is the main drag. It's a highway going through our town and kind of, you know? And it would be good to find out what places in Boulder or somewhere that have cold weather and can't use these parklets all year, what they, if they have them or what? Because it's, they sit empty half the year and they.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can tell you that I did a little research for my previous community. We didn't have snow on the ground, but we did have certainly wind events and rain events that made them, you know, uninhabitable for many, many months of the year. And what I found was that the wood solutions tend to go away. In other words, you can't build something of wood and have it last more than a hand. In other words, you can't build something of wood and have it last more than a handful of years in a mountain community or a wet community. So the conversion was one of extending, if you will, the sidewalk. So instead of a wood construction, it is concrete and metal, steel, that formed, you know, the new, if you will, floor of the parklet. And, you know, in transportation engineering speak, these are called curb extensions. Tabletop intersections is another way to think of it. The sort of, the travel lane pinches down between these curb extensions. You know, these are very European solutions that are prevalent throughout European communities where the on-street parking is intermittent between the curb line, which tends to ebb and flow, go in and out to accommodate more tabletops in what would be, you know, a parking part of the street. But those get very expensive. I've had this conversation at a staff level with Ken Kellogg to make sure that whatever we envision, you know, is consistent and compatible with snow removal. He has challenges frankly with these parklets because they aren't as easy to plow around as they could otherwise be. So I think what I'll do is I'll pull together to Melanie's prompt a little bit of a design package for you, just with some photographs of communities that have similar conditions and changed from temporary to permanent status. And maybe we dedicate an entire Planning Commission meeting, you know, a good solid hour, hour and a half plus to this conversation and really understand the challenges associated with the changes. Because something's got to be done. We're not operating this particular component of our municipal code as literally as it was intended to be enforced. We didn't really define this permanent temporary nature and what needs to be done over time. So that's the crux of this. So Design Operational Components and then the other sections are the Design Evaluation because right now it's you guys that review them. It is also the standards that apply. So we talk about decking and, you know, it gets into a great amount of detail.
So Jeff?
So, yeah.
What are the dates that those sunset on? Are they just annual, like January?
Yes. Yeah, they're annual and they've been re-upped annually every year. Pipelines was just re-upped. They come to us every year. Staff inspect. Staff, you know, add conditions to the reapproval or to the extenuation of those permits.
How far in advance? How far in advance does that application go in?
They tend to go, they tend to give us 30 days, 30, 45 days ahead when we get them.
So if we don't like what's happening there, for example, we can't do anything until next year?
Well, right now, the Pipeline one is good. Yeah, it has a valid permit for a year. As I said, the Sparkies permit is open to a new assessment by staff as we speak.
Is there a way to amend the permit during the course of the year?
I don't know the code that well. I'd have to look at it. I can answer that question for you when I send you material.
I'm wondering a couple things. One, have you reached out? I mean, obviously the ownership change at Sparkies, they probably are chewing on a lot of things right now. But if you've reached out to the Pipeline and, you know, if you have a sense of what they'd like. I like the parklet. I like the vibrancy it gives to the downtown. I, you know, having watched that space be a lot of different things or a number of different things over the years, to commit to something permanent seems like a big commitment. I'm wondering if you've seen something that's substantial in terms of maintenance but movable? And something perhaps that if they could remove it for, say, three months of the year when you're pretty sure nobody's going to be outside, say, November, December, January, you know, whatever, pick some months, four months, and actually be able to pull it out?
That's the cafe, that's the cafe, street cafe section of that, I think.
I didn't really understand any, a lot of the, I needed a better, I needed a better description for some of the alternative things. But anyway, it seems like I'd want to know what's working and not working for them. And, yeah, how we can, you know, how we can keep doing it in a way that works for our climate and for, you know, the community and the business owners.
Yeah. What I intend to do between now and the time this becomes an action item for you is to engage with both permittees and ask them some of these questions as well. I, you know, the obvious solution is, in this case, one of ensuring that we're meeting both, you know, private side and public side needs and maintenance and snow removal demands as well. So it, right now feels, at least from what I've heard, that, you know, Pipeline and Sparkies both like having that additional floor area because it generates income for them. And that income is certainly not offset by the minimal permit fee. And one question that will come up, has come up in my experience is, is there a more proportional or equitable fee structure that ensures that those businesses are paying for the right to use the public right-of-way? Is it a percentage of revenue? Is it a percentage of leased floor area? Because effectively what you're doing is you're leasing public right-of-way for private use. So this was a very heavily debated topic in my previous community. And essentially what led to it falling apart was that the expense and consequences associated, maintenance consequences associated with having a non-permanent structure in your right-of-way, it was just too much for public works to maintain because they were delicate. They were hard to clean in and around. And they were damaged from time to time and the city was liable for that damage. And the merchants were paying a moderate permit fee for the right to rent our public right-of-way. So, you know, there's both sides of it. What do we, what does the city want? What does the merchant want? What do they need to make it pencil for them? But all these questions I plan on engaging here as we move forward. I haven't done that yet.
You know, St. Helena did it right, I think.
You know what? Von, you should go to your mic.
I think you heard me.
Can you hear, can you hear Von all right?
Yeah. I can, yeah.
Okay.
I think St. Helena got it right.
Yeah. I'm not sure they have any now anymore, do they?
Yeah, they do. Yeah, it's just more like the cafe kind of thing. There's, they might have a planner or something out, but those can be removed easily. But, you know, they can bring them in for the winter time or whatever, if there's no seating. So, I mean, that's a classier way to do it, I think.
They're portable?
No, it's just, they have like, just think of yourself as walking down the Champs-Elysees and there's these little outside tables and chairs and things with these restaurants.
In the, what, in the streets? Not on the sidewalk?
No, it's on the sidewalk. Not in the street. Nothing's on the street but cars. And so they might have some of those outdoor heater things, the classier ones, I think, right now, if they want to sit out at this time of year. But it's just tables and chairs, you know, with cloth covers on them and the whole nine yards. It's classy.
Yeah. So there's, you're touching on the sidewalk dining component where, you know, we allow tabletops. And we do allow, we just modified our sidewalk dining provisions, our encroachment provisions to allow sidewalk dining within the existing curb line as long as we're maintaining accessibility standards. And so we're allowing that. But I think if you look at Park, you know, look at Pipeline, you know, they probably seat, what, 20 people out there on that thing?
Thirty.
Easily more, probably, yeah.
Yeah. They can pack them in, right? So I'm not sure they could seat that many if that thing went away and they just loaded up the sidewalk with tables. So that's where the solution is, well, what if you made the sidewalk wider in that spot and you could double up the seating process?
It's a trade-off for parking space. It's a trade-off for, you know, for the eyesore. I'm not a fan of the looking like everything's put together with pallets. It's just not my bag. But it, I mean, he can, there's a happy medium in there somewhere, it would seem.
What? I know it was before your time, Jeff, but how did these become temporary-permanent structures? Because when we approved them in 2020, they were only supposed to be there until the indoor dining mandate was gone.
Yeah. So...
What was the oversight by the city to allow them just to stay?
They are reviewed annually. So can you see my screen?
That was, that was, we didn't have an ordinance at that time. The ordinance was...
Well, when, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is when the ordinance was created, they specified a permit duration of 12 months with annual renewal.
But that didn't happen until, that didn't happen until 2023.
Right. So those things existed through the COVID period. COVID sunsetted and it took the city and staff this long, you know, whatever that is, two years, a year, to generate an ordinance to make them quote-unquote "permanent." But therein lies the problem because they're not permanent. By definition, they are temporary. So that's why we're here having this conversation tonight is, do we reevaluate the entire ordinance and make it a permanent parklet or not? That's the first question. Because they're temporary and they've outlived their temporary nature, it's up to you all to direct staff to formulate a recommendation and come back to you and then go forward to Council. And certainly as an option on the table for your consideration would be to end the program entirely.
Well, I know the City Council tends to be in favor of them, but then there's some heavy conflicts of interest within the Council with regards to some of those businesses involved. So it's just kind of a, it's not going to be an easy thing to navigate through.
Yeah. That's why, you know, that's why I didn't want to come to you guys with too much in the way of a pre, you know, a cooked recommendation without understanding, you understanding the context of the issue and really getting your heads into it and doing a little bit of research on your own, certainly. And I consider myself among you all in that sense. I will do my own research. I will provide what I have to you when I have it. And we can re-engage this topic in a month's time and have a more informed conversation about it, certainly. And I would hope by then you guys would be, in your own individual rights, closer to a sense of, you know, direction and preference. If that makes sense. I'm open to other procedural options, but I just, knowing you guys and knowing this subject matter and staff's background on this, I'm giving you, you know, I'm turning this into a two-month ordeal rather than a single-month ordeal. And I think we ought to prioritize it and as a group formulate a recommendation and move forward with Council, you know, in the next 60 days.
No, I think that sounds good. I appreciate the introduction and some more of the backstory. I think that helps quite a bit.
And I think it's good to let everybody know that it's something that we don't have to have because where it's maybe popular, it never went through any kind of design ordinance, nothing, you know? They just built it because of the COVID issue. And we were good with that because we understood how much restaurants were struggling then. But it needs to be way more oversight on how they look and what they're doing and all that kind of stuff than is currently. And that's not going to be popular because there's a lot of people that use those restaurants. I don't. So I'm kind of neutral on it, you know? It's like I go, yeah, I like the idea of outdoor dining, but I'm, I don't like these. They're like a big solid wood wall. I mean, what is that? I don't get it, you know? So, yeah.
Well, we might want to figure this out before we have to issue a new permit to this new owner, right?
Well, we can't change that now because the statute is the statute. The local law says they can do it. Even if you guys did make a change in six months or 60 days, sorry, they would still be allowed to operate until their permit is sunset.
No, no, no. The new owner for Sparkies.
Well, but he's still operating under the same permit availability. We can't deny him because he's...
The new person has to get his new, has to renew it himself though, right?
Right. But consistent with the ordinance that we have on the books right now, which permits it.
Somehow Planning Commission was like overstepped with the issuing of, reissuing of the ordinance in, I guess, I don't know what the right word is, bringing it back to life after it expired in 2017. Is how I'm seeing this.
It was COVID.
No, it says in here, in 2017, City Council approved parklets for a five-month trial period. And then that ended. And then we approved them under COVID just during closed indoor dining. And then the City Council in 2023 just kind of rebrought back that ordinance.
Yeah. Like I said, you're not going to want to look too deep into that. I don't think we like the way it's going.
Well, let me, let me just, you know, for the sake of this staff here and now, you're not being overlooked now. You're being asked early and with clear intent to own this code, tear it up, or rebuild it. It's your call right now.
Well, if we approved a change and there were new applicants, it would apply to the new applicants, would it not?
No, because the code needs to go to Council before it's statute.
Right. I mean, approve, I'm not talking about just us, but if it goes to Council and it's approved, there's new applicants, they'd have to adhere to the new guidelines, wouldn't they?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. But as far as Sparkies goes, you know, they got an application on the counter right now.
They're grandfathered.
You can't change, you can't change the ordinance while once somebody's submitted the application.
No. You are evaluated under the legislative doctrine that exists at the time. No, you are evaluated under the legislative doctrine that exists at the time you submit your application.
I understand that. I'm just talking about, say, there were new applicants and we pushed through a new ordinance and it was approved by council, then the new ordinance would stand for any new applicants.
Yes.
Yes.
So if we make changes to the ordinance, how do you make the existing ones compliant?
Next year.
Next year, yeah. Next year, it would, it would be a whole nother fiscal year until they have to come into compliance?
They haven't renewed yet.
It's a yearly permit.
Yep.
So we can't-
Yeah, so-
-them into compliance?
It's not an automatic renewal.
Right. You, you would get, you know, the new code would go into effect. And they were, when they, when that permit comes into a renewal, they would, they would need to, in effect, what they become is legally non-conforming until they are required, until their permit expires. So we have lots of legal non-conforming situations in the city, right? Signage. Signage is probably the most egregious.
I agree.
Some of those, you know. So, yeah, best-case scenario, you know, we get, we get the, sorry, we get the permit renewals next January or December. And typically, any amendment to the municipal code that goes through Planning Commission is at least 60 days. So there's two months. City Council, best case, is three months. They'll probably stretch that to four. So you do the math and we're, we're going to come up on times of the essence.
Yeah, that's my point, is why don't we just start doing it? And then by the, you know, with the intent of having it all pushed through by, say, June?
We are. I think that's, that's-
I mean, by council also.
But they both renewed in January.
Right, I'm not talking about them, but anybody new who applies or when they go to renew, this will already be in place. It won't be news to them.
I'm timeline confused.
Okay.
On, why is there renewal in, because is it the, the calendar year triggers renewal or original application date?
Yeah, it's calendar year is what he said.
Yeah, calendar year.
Okay, nevermind.
All right, well, it sounds to me like we have a plan. And for folks in the audience, I'm hoping that those of you who are interested in this are paying attention and can bring your thoughts and opinions next time when we'll open it up for public comment also. Anything else, commissioners, on the parklets? Okeydoke.
Yeah, I'm glad we're talking about it, though.
Yeah, I think it's good. Anything else on the parklets? Are we good, Jeff?
That's good. So you'll expect to get some information from me. I'll send you a design package here and some precedents and, and then keep your comments coming to me and I can consolidate and compile and, and we can have this exact same discussion with our sleeves rolled up next month.
That sounds good. All right. Moving on to item seven, commission and staff comments. Jeff, do you have something for us?
I do not. I feel like I've spoken a lot. I, there, there is one little thing that took place over the last couple of working days. We, we did get, and I've mentioned this a few times, but the Eugene Sway project up on Spring Hill is getting closer to a complete application. I'm hoping that he selects a secret consultant or resolves his secret challenges.
Eugene Sway, they need more context about the project, which is up on Spring Hill. He's making that kind of exoskeleton building. Yeah.
Yeah, Eugene Sway has been apparently a fixture long before my arrival and he's made lots of public presentations about his vision. But he, it is a, I, I always imagine like the Starship Enterprise landed up there and, and was partially buried. It kind of looks like. And, and it's, it's a beautifully sustainable visionary piece of architecture, for sure. And we have a two-track process in design review, as you know, so we can go through the creative side of it. And I think it's going to be a very interesting conversation. And I'm, I'm really hoping that he gets a complete application here so you all can see it. If that happens next month, great. If not, I'm hopeful that it happens shortly thereafter. We have Planning Commission interviews at council that we're trying to schedule. I was hoping you'd get confirmation today. There are two of you that, whose, whose time is up. You know who you are, Commissioner Sarayan and Commissioner Beck. Your terms expire at the end of this month. And we have four applicants for those positions. And we're very likely going to have those interviews. I was told they're trying to get council to do a special meeting because they can't do it at the next regular council meeting because there are union negotiations that are taking up that entire day. So they're trying to get a special meeting together and it's possible that we would hold those interviews at a special meeting early on the day of the next council meeting or the first council meeting in February. So for those following along, that's going to be the third. Is that right? No. Second and fourth, right? 10th and 20th. So it's the 10th of February is what they are trying to schedule interviews for, for those two new positions. I am doing my best to coordinate with our new clerk to get some clarity in the, in the mix, to you, you all. Paul and Tucson, apologies for last-minute directive on this, but I'm, I'm doing the best I can with what we have to work with and I'll give you a heads up as soon as I have it. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks, commissioners. Von, you want to start, got anything?
I have a question. Is this just an open question for anything or?
It's a comment or a question?
Okay. I'll make everybody happy. Can you hear me now?
No, you can.
That's great.
Okay, so the question is, we had, we, there was some conversation a while back about blocking views and things like that and height restrictions of, of properties. Jeff, remember that?
We had a conversation about height during the objective design standards. Yeah, that's my recollection.
Okay. Was there a resolution to that? I, I can't remember, or is this something still pending?
No, we did not change any height limits in the existing municipal code. Those were untouched.
Okay, so if somebody, say, owns a house and somebody wants to build a two-story house that's going to block their view, that's okay? Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, as long as it's consistent with, or compliant with the base zone height limits, yes.
Okay.
That it?
Yep.
Belinda? Tucson?
I was wondering, you know, there's so many people that maybe still are, you know, watching us online from home. And I know that we're not getting public comments from them anymore. I'm wondering if there is, is a way to reinstate some sort of way that they can comment, whether it be a text question or something that someone monitors? Because I know it's not, well, both feasible or convenient for some people to, to come here in person. I'm just wondering if there's a way.
Yeah, I can, I could run that by city manager, city council, and also city attorney. I'm not sure how much authority we have to change our procedural. We've always been, in my experience, Planning Commission has always fallen, fallen in line with city council, public comment, and Brown Act, obviously. But I, I'd have to run that up to, to get some input. I can report back to you.
Great, thank you.
Paul?
Nope.
David?
Hey, I jump out a question. The, I believe, suspect that there's, we don't have a lot of authority over what happens at the schools and their signs. Sisson, the middle school put up a very bright, changing, so completely contrary to our goals around signage. Is there anything we can do?
Unfortunately, no. I mean, within public health, safety issues, but-
Glare? Ooh, big-time glare.
What is this?
Um, Sisson, on the side of the gym at Sisson, it's just so bright. So, just beaming down on the street. Yeah, and it's on at night. And it's super bright.
Can we have it turned off at 10 o'clock or something?
It'd be nice.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to them for sure and also look at what we can do with schools. That might be a city attorney question.
If you could put that into your spare time, that'd be lovely.
Sure. All right. I'll check.
Thank you. All right, that's it for me. Do we have any other conversation for our next item around future agenda items, which you touched on already? Just making sure we haven't missed anything?
That's all I've got.
Okay. That's it then. Item nine, I'm adjourning our Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 regular Planning Commission meeting.
When's the next meeting?
The next one is in February and I don't know. It's not on there, I don't think. No, so. Adjourned.